Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. So next is roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Present.
Mayor Matt Sumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
And Mayor Pro Tem Wall asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Pro Tem? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He is excused. Thank you. Next is any, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next we move on to the general public comment. Do we have any? Anyone? Any public comments?
Yes, we just have one who signed up to speak remotely and that is Adam Sekay. Adam, you have five minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So I just wanted to elaborate on something I said the last time I spoke. So during the meet the candidates meeting, it was claimed that when the mayor asked residents of Mount Lake Terrace about Flock, everyone is for it across the political spectrum. But the reality of the situation is that most people don't know what Flock is, don't know its real purpose, and don't know the company's disgraceful history and practices. The average resident of Mount Lake Terrace doesn't know anything about Flock, and I don't blame them because they're too busy to know. They're busy working a full-time job or multiple full-time jobs just to get by. They're busy getting repeatedly infected by COVID and trying to recover while having to deal with those jobs and raising a family while being sick. They're busy suffering from long COVID and going to endless doctor's appointments where they get no answers but do get reinfected due to the lack of masking, ventilation, and air filtration. They're busy trying to figure out how to make ends meet. Every morning that the food bank is open, the line of cars stretches for blocks. As the leaders of this town who have inexplicably invited a dangerous company like Flock into it, it's your responsibility to educate the people you ask about Flock before getting their opinion. If you casually ask people, what do you think about Mount Lake Terrace getting a new crime fighting tool? Of course they're going to say yes. If you withhold the facts from them, it would be like if you said to someone, how about taking this pain medication when you have a headache while leaving out known facts about that medication? That it doesn't really fight pain and that it's known to frequently cause nausea, organ damage, and tumors? Or asking someone, how about a piece of pie while leaving out the fact that it's been sitting in the trash overnight? Since residents of Mount Lake Terrace have been patiently teaching you the facts about Flock at these meetings, you can't claim ignorance about those facts. You're actively withholding them. And the decision to withhold them from people is a conscious biased choice to keep people ignorant in an effort to drum up support for proceeding with Flock. And I have to say, claiming that no one you talk to is opposed to Flock is a slap in the face to everyone who takes the time out of their day to teach you about Flock at these meetings. You ignore us as we do your work for you. A five-second Google search will tell you that Flock is in absolute danger, but somehow you couldn't even do this before inviting it into our town or before voting? Unless, of course, you just don't care and are ideologically committed to unconstitutionally surveilling residents of Mount Lake Terrace and putting them at risk of being attacked and detained by the agencies that Flock partners with, in which case I don't even know what to say. The next time you ask someone if they support Flock, tell them what we know about Flock in Mount Lake Terrace. One, Mount Lake Terrace does not have a serious or worsening crime problem. It's a safe place to live. Two, Flock isn't a crime fighting tool. It's a surveillance tool masquerading as a crime fighting tool. Three, there's no actual data showing that Flock works to solve crime. Four, Flock is unconstitutional. Five, Flock has an extensive history of lying to towns. Six, Flock has already lied to you and to a degree where a council member openly regrets his original vote and now opposes Flock. Seven, Flock has an extensive history of providing data to federal agencies that illegally stalk, beat, terrorize, kidnap, and kill residents and workers and then lying about it. Eight, Flock has an extensive history of dishonoring accountability agreements with towns. Nine, Flock leaves towns open to costly lawsuits. It's happening across the country. Ten, Flock is actively suing towns themselves for trying to rein in its lawless behavior. I guarantee you if you present that information to people when asking them if they want Flock in Mount Lake Terrace, they'll get an overwhelming no. With the exceptions of Aaron Murray, Steve Woodard, and William Page, this has been an astonishing failure of leadership and a failure to meet the moment. It's straight-up negligence. I just do not understand how with everything we know about Flock and with everything happening in this country, that any of you, let alone four of you, still are even considering moving forward with a dangerous company like Flock. It's inexcusable and the people of this town deserve better.
No one, no one else has signed up for public comment and all public comments submitted in writing were provided to council.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the review of the public hearing and vote on ordinances, ordinances adopting property annexation and zoning designation for 24229 48th Avenue, should be 48th Avenue West, right? With our senior planner Sarah Pizzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sarah Pizzo, senior planner for the city of Mount Lake Terrace, and I'll be briefly reviewing the annexation and zoning ordinances related to 24229 48th Avenue West. I'll be also providing planning commission's recommendation tonight on the zoning, sharing the boundary review board results, and then you'll have the public hearing and vote. I'll be going over council goals, the comprehensive plan legislative history, subject summary, financial impacts, providing the recommendation and discussing next steps. So our council goal that relates to this item is growing our vibrant community as annexing will add a property into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. The comprehensive plan relates to this proposal via the capital facilities element, which requires annexation before providing sewer services, as well as the land use element, which shows a comprehensive plan designation of R1 for this property. It also encourages us to work cooperatively with the county with annexation processes. So our legislative history began in June, where we went through all the processes required to annex a property and to adopt zoning. And so we passed, we passed resolutions, we had public hearings, and tonight you'll have the opportunity to vote on the annexation and the zoning. So quick summary refresh, this property is over 17,000 square feet or .4 acres. It is surrounded by city limits on all sides and within our urban growth area, so it is an area intended to be annexed into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And the property owners would like to annex because they'd like to receive city sewer service. And as I mentioned, our comp plan shows the designated land use designation is R1 residential and so that is also the proposed zoning designation. There are no financial or budget impacts. The community has been notified about this proposal through the council agenda, public hearing notice that was done as required, it was in the newspaper, mailed to neighbors, et cetera. Planning Commission reviewed the zoning and as I mentioned, they do recommend an R1 zoning for this property that aligns with the comprehensive plan, as well as the existing improvements on this site, which are single-family residents and associated improvements. And the SEPA review resulted in a determination of non-significance. The Boundary Review Board received the city's notice of intent to annex this property and they waived their review because it met state requirements of being less than 10 acres and less than $2 million in assessed value. So they waived their review. And so staff is recommending the annexation of this unincorporated area at 24229 48th Avenue West, as well as an ordinance for the zoning designation, designating the property as R1, which aligns with the planning commission recommendation. So the next steps will be council to have the public hearing and vote on the ordinance and then if approved, staff will do all of the required notifications to the county, the state, and city departments as the final, finalization of getting everything set. Okay, now we have time for discussion and questions. Should you have any? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any? Because we've been through this several times before. Okay. All right, if there are no, no questions, I'm going to ask someone to open the public hearing. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Are there any written testimonies on this? City clerk?
There is no written public testimony and no one who wants to speak online or in person.
All right. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Can I just ask a question? I know right on that corner there, we've got Terrace Ridge Park and there's two houses there, but we're only talking about the second house in?
Yes. Let me pull up the map. It's just one property. Let's see. So it does touch the park on the eastern property line. There is one residential property south that is not included. It is already part of the city of Mount Lake Terrace, as well as the residences to the north and east. So this is just one lot. It's an unincorporated island, meaning the rest of the land around it is already incorporated in the city.
So it's just that one house?
Correct.
Because aren't we almost done with annexing all the properties? There may be one over kind of by Briar.
A couple more, two or three more.
Because I didn't think we had, like, I'm just curious, this all is just one house. How, how did one house all by itself get unincorporated when the one right next door is in the city? Is it on sewer? I mean, is it on septic?
It is on septic. I'm not sure why originally when, you know, the city was incorporated, why it wasn't included way back when, but for whatever reason, it is an unincorporated island and to receive sewer service, they need to annex and so that is why they, they desire to do so.
There was more curiosity questions, so thank you for that.
Okay. So what are the council's wishes? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the ordinance adopting the annexation of property and zoning designation of R1 for the site located at 24229 48th Avenue West.
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussions before we call for the question? Nope. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have one less island in the city. Thank you. Now, we'll go on to the review of the interlocal agreement with the Somers County Emergency Management for member funding with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is, the process is a little bit different here. What we're looking for tonight is just head nods and the reason for that is this interlocal agreement has 18 other jurisdictional partners that are a party to it. So in November, the regional, regional group will get together and determine which one of the options that I'm going to go over is the one that is the preferred option and then we'll actually bring the interlocal agreement language back to you at a later date for your approval. So a little bit of background here, the original interlocal agreement was approved in January of 2019 and the most recent version, the one we have in front of us tonight, was approved on December 18th, 2024. The city entered into the agreement on December 18th, 2024. It covers several different things, including planning services for emergency management, training and exercise services, readiness and response, and you can, you see the list there in your staff report. So what's happened is that during the last year, or actually DEM has relied on these, some federal grants to provide emergency management in the, in our communities and all the jurisdictional partners that are part of this, this agreement. Three federal grants are, were relied on to provide these services along with our contributions individually. The three biggest grants are the Emergency Management Performance Grant, the State Homeland Security Grant, and the Urban Area Security Initiative. So the Department of Emergency Management staff at the county level has seen relatively clear signals since the beginning of 2025 that there would likely be challenges with federal grant programs. And they have changed their operations slightly to ensure that the level of funding that they have now will continue and be able to carry out those services through the end of this year. The question becomes what happens in 2026? So this grant agreement, this, sorry, this interlocal agreement currently runs through December of 2026. Because there is likely to be a reduction in federal grant monies for emergency management services, there, where Department of Emergency Management is making plans and there's a couple of challenges here. First, the federal funding update, there are, whoop, I just clicked out of it, of course. Give me just a second here. There are a couple of lawsuits that the state and the county have joined that we won't have a determination for before the end of the, before the, actually, the federal fiscal year ended September 30th. So that funding is officially, effectively been cut off. And now I can't find the email I'm looking for, but I'll go by memory. There is a, basically a lawsuit for the terms of the grant. The new grants for fiscal year 2026 require several things that have come out of the executive orders at, at federal level, which would make it illegal for the state to accept grant dollars. Those include the DEI initiatives at the federal level, which conflict with the Keep Washington Working Act. So the state and the county would not be able to accept those funds. We're hopeful, or DEM is hopeful, that they'll be on the prevailing side of the lawsuits that they have joined, but we won't know that until later this year. So what, what DEM is looking for now is, or has proposed are three options. Option one is a reduction in services from what they currently do and they, they being DEM have identified a couple of programs that they would be able to reduce and stay within the current funding level. One are the supplemental plans and that includes volunteer and donations management and catastrophic and earthquake planning. The next one that they would be able to eliminate or substantially reduce include a recovery framework planning document and a vulnerable population's transportation planning document. And it goes into further detail in your staff report on what those are. The last one is mitigation planning, which is what we've been involved with for the, the past several months. All the jurisdictions come together in order to mitigate what's happening. Those, the mitigation annexes are required by FEMA at this point in order to receive FEMA funding when there is a disaster emergency. However, if the federal funding for the planning goes away, then that requirement will also no longer exist. And then the last option to reduce services is to reduce non-911 outreach and that would include things like the CERT program that our police department successfully ran last weekend to prepare, to prepare members of the community to respond to emergencies in their neighborhoods. The next option, option two, is to raise rates about 30% from each of the jurisdictional partners in order to maintain the service levels that they provide today. For us, that would mean about $11,000, a little over $11,000 to maintain, maintain those services. And then option three is a combination and I can't really give you the elements of what that combination might be because it needs to be agreed on, agreed upon by all the partners. So what we're asking for tonight is one of these preferred options that we'll be able to take to the group in November when they meet, all the parties of the, to the interlocal agreement when they meet. And then that's the option that DEM will move forward to. Then we will bring this interlocal agreement back to you for a formal vote and modification of the agreement language. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And you know, mine's just a quick question you might not be able to answer it. I'm looking at the two raised rates and they put a side-by-side population and I was just curious, what is this really paying for? When I look at Darrington is paying $711 and Woodway is paying $631.
Yeah. It's a population-based, is my understanding, and it's really an economies of scale so we can all do these mitigation planning efforts together because we're all in the same area.
So it's nothing to do with lot sizes or anything like that?
No, I, I believe it's strictly population-based.
Fascinating. Okay, thank you.
I just have a few. Good question. Where, where in the budget does this $11,000 come from? I mean, let me see. That there, I'm not 11,000, it'd be over 40. Currently, where does the $34,934 come from within our budget?
General fund.
Okay. So we have to increase it if the council agrees to that 11,388.74 or whatever it is. Can the city let us know where they can save that money in the general fund? Because it sounds like that's something that will probably go up. My question is, if federal grants come back, will they lower it?
If federal grants come back, if the, the lawsuits are successful, I would imagine that the option packages would go away. They wouldn't need this additional funding in order to carry out the same duties.
Is that something that we can campaign on that they put into that contract? Because a lot of times we see things go up and they never come back down again.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
Do we have an ER plan in our city already that the staff has put together?
An emergency response plan? For several different areas, we're actually starting the Water Emergency Response Plan update now. Overall, it's usually combined into the CEMP is what it's called, Comprehensive Emergency Response Plan, and that is coordinated with county and with our neighbors.
As we used to be able to go into our emergency response center and we would take tours and we would have a classroom where we would learn what we would do in a case of emergency for our city and what our staff would do. And I'm hoping we still have something like that over there and it needs to be looked at because as a citizen, this is one of the things I would expect that the city would pay for. We have a fault line running through Mount Lake Terrace. Everybody says we're due for an earthquake. I hope not. They just had one off of the Oregon coast. I know there's stuff going on in Alaska and I hope that we can prevent it, but I think this is one thing that I think the citizens would expect us to have would be an emergency response in case of an earthquake or, God forbid, like California had major fires or whatever it would be. But having something like this, I, I think that we have to participate in. It sounds like this is something that we don't have to. So if a city can't afford to pay this, this is not something that we're mandated to do. This is something that we voluntarily do.
This, so the coordination with the county is not required, but as I mentioned, when I, when councilmember Woodard asked the question, it's really an economies of scale. Having someone coordinate all of our plans together and make sure that we're addressing things, playing to our strengths and helping our neighbors is kind of the value of what this interlocal agreement is all about. Do we have to have this coordination? No, but I do think it, it is definitely a value add.
I agree.
Thank you. I guess the question I have is, because I'm not, wasn't involved, but so we entered the agreement on December 18th for said services. How much of those services for what we're paying for have we actually received? You know, and in the past, you know, what does that look like in terms of how, how much of these type of services? Is it the whole bundle or is it like one or two things? And what does that look like?
So of what we've received quite a bit, this is how Gary Shimick, our public works director, is participating in the Whidby Island Fault Exercise that's being planned for next year. It's a major regional exercise on how all of our communities respond in the event of a major earthquake. You know, what we do, setting out the game plan for that and finding out where the stress points are, for lack of a better term. As far as, you know, whether you can, it's like à la carte, whether you can pick services or not, I don't believe that's the case because there's no reason why the other 18 jurisdictions that have already agreed to it would allow, you know, another partner to, to pick and choose.
So how do we actually receive these services? I know we just did the CERT training that, that you referenced. Is that part of these services that you're referring to?
That's just an example of what's paid for by the mitigation planning effort. That is under this ILA coordinated through Snohomish County DEM, Department of Emergency Services. We could receive those funds directly, but I think it would probably cost us more to administer a federal program than it would pay.
And, and I guess the big question I have is, how have we been historically and currently with informing our residents of these various things that we have, you know, been planning for? How has that information been filtered out? And the reason why I ask that question is because I don't know if anybody else did today. But at 10:30 this morning, I was talking to my wife and on, on our phones, we received, you know, earthquake alert for train, you know, for planning. And so we stopped and talked about, well, what does And so we stopped and talked about, well, what does the city have? What has the city showed? What has the city given the residents? You know, where do people go, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Who do they look for for information from the city? So this is an appropriate conversation because we couldn't answer that question.
So historically, I don't know. I don't know about that. I think over the last two years, our emergency planning efforts have ramped up substantially because when I got here, the CEMP or the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan hadn't been updated in quite a while. So we started that work. It initially started with the police department, but it's since transitioned to Public Works because most of the things that we're going to have to deal with in the event of an earthquake are broken water lines, making sure that we get water to people who need it, those types of things, an immediate response needs. Police can control the scene, they can't fix the water pipes.
Does the public know, our residents know, that these plans exist? And what form of it do they know? You know, because that's going to always be the question. You know, when there's an emergency, what is the government, what is my government, city government? What are they prepared to do?
Yeah, so we can put the information out there, and we have. We, as, you know, we've talked about, we held the CERT training last weekend and invited 50 people down. As far as what they know, I don't know. I don't know what they read or don't.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I feel like there, for me, there's not a good option here, and I'll just name that, and it's frustrating, these shifts in funding that continue to negatively impact both our city budget as well as, you know, that trickles down to negatively impacting our residents. And so I will just name it. I don't like that. That said, I think this is critically important work, and we don't, I don't think there is a viable option to do it for less than we are, you know, than we are able to do it collectively. And I think this is a good example of the sorts of things we've been talking about as a council in terms of how do we partner, you know, with neighboring jurisdictions and across the county to find cost savings. And I think this is a great example of where we've already been doing that for quite some time. This was actually one of the first things I asked about when I joined the council because I had happened to meet someone who does this work for a neighboring jurisdiction in King County, and I was like, what do we do? Because I think similar to Councilmember Page, as a resident, I didn't feel like I had a good answer. And, you know, I appreciate that, you know, I think we are engaged in this work. I think we need to continue to engage in this work. I love that we had CERT training. I think that is one of, having gone through that here within the last year or so, I think that is one of the most impactful things that we can do is help individuals to be prepared. I went to the session at the last AWC conference about, you know, communities who had gone through major natural disasters, primarily wildfires in eastern Washington, but even prior to changes in federal services, particularly with FEMA, no one is coming right away. And I think it's really important that our residents understand that, and I do think, thinking about how we help to continue to work to educate our residents and, you know, maybe work with Sienna to, you know, maybe do some focus, additional focus there, I think would be super helpful. But hopefully those CERT folks, I think the goal is that as we train more people in the community, they're able to convey to their neighbors and folks in their circles, here's what we all need to do individually to be prepared, and here are the things we can do to collectively support one another through that preparedness. And I will say, like, I would just, if folks have not taken the time to look at that community, CERT is Community Emergency Response Training, I think is what it stands for. It is a worthwhile exercise for both you as an individual as well as anybody who cares about being able to support their neighbors if something happens. There is not going to be somebody there five minutes, an hour, maybe six hours, maybe days after an event happens, depending on what happens. And so we really do need to ensure that all of us are prepared. But anyway, sorry, tangent a little bit, but very supportive of us continuing to engage in this work. And I would also be very supportive of us talking to our state and federal delegation about efforts to help backfill the financial gaps that these cuts are causing because it isn't fair to our folks. I mean, it's frustrating. So important work. I think we need to figure out how to make the financial aspect of it work, but I'm not happy about it, I guess.
Yeah, Jake will be here next week, and that'll be a topic, I'm sure. He'll be here to talk with council about our federal agenda, and I can certainly share that with Amina and Shelley who were here last week.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one more question. It could just be an oversight or perhaps it's listed in unincorporated, which wouldn't make any sense, but I noticed Everett isn't listed. I'm looking at page three. Yeah, I've lost sight of what document this is. I'm getting used to it. But it lists basically our population and then how much it would cost us, if that helps. Are they just not listed? And where I'm going with this is, I know there's 18 cities and two towns. It looks like everybody's listed except Everett, but if they aren't on here, I'm wondering, is there a third option of bringing Everett into the fold? I don't know who that impacts, but I know if there's somebody who's not a part of the coalition, is that going to change our rates if we bring them into the fold? I mean, pursuing that?
Bringing Everett in would raise costs for sure.
Raise ours?
Well, no, but raise costs for the overall program. But then whatever their contribution would be, I don't know, to be honest with you, if Everett is a part of this group. I can definitely find that out, but we can ask Snohomish County.
If it's going to cost us more money, no, ask.
Well, no, I'm saying it would cost, the overall program would cost more, but then Everett's contribution, would that, you know, level it out? And does Everett have their own internal? They have enough resources to have a staff member dedicated to this.
That's what I'm like, I want to proceed cautiously recognizing that may be some job, but still.
Right.
If it's going to help, if it's all about everybody, it seems like the time to be asking that question when everybody is looking at their budget, so.
Yeah, I'm just looking at partners. It looks like, you know, we and maybe Edmunds are probably the biggest partners as part of the ILA. I may be missing one here. Oh, Lake Stephens is a part of it too, so, yeah. It's, if I had to guess, and it is only a guess, Everett probably has their own internal program just for a city, and they coordinate with Snohomish County, but they run their own program.
If anybody wants to go to these meetings, I do get the invites. Councilmember Son or has been ahead? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a follow-up question sparked by Councilmember Woodard's question, so I appreciate the conversation. I guess, yeah, in terms of funding and who's responsible and who, why doesn't the county just own this work for jurisdictions across the county? Is it this way everywhere? Maybe that should be my question.
It is. That I can answer with confidence. This is the way it's done pretty much everywhere.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, now, Councilmember Son.
I just didn't want to take your question. I just had a comment, and we both shook our head because we've been through a lot of this training. And one of the things that's very scary about this, especially during an earthquake or something, a lot of time our citizens are going to be on their own, and we need to know where our water and gas shut-off is. We have to have boxed food supplies. That's why we've always advertised a list of emergency, and you can go online and look at an emergency list. We've encouraged people to give these as Christmas presents, a whole lot of different things, but a lot of things that was, you know, you just assume that our staff is going to be at their station doing what they want, but if they have an emergency home at home, you know, they want to be with their family too. So one of the things that we've always tried to do is get our citizens to kind of be, I don't want to say, it was kind of self-reliant, and get to know your neighbors so you do have help, but it's something that is, I hope we never have to experience.
Also, I thought that in the past, the emergency center, if anything happened, was at our Public Works.
It is.
And it's still there?
It is still there.
And the public probably should know where the Public Works building is.
Yeah.
Because that will be the emergency shelter to go to. There's a lot of other things. I think it's still on our website, what to do in case of an emergency.
I will verify that.
Okay, and then also, even though we can do this over and over again, I think we should do it over and over again in our city newsletter. You know, once a year at least, reminding people that if a disaster happens, these are the things to do. These are where you can go. And a regional emergency center is being thought about, and hopefully that would happen because it's not only city to city, but we need a regional, one that can take hundreds of people with showers and so forth. And the last thing is, a lot of people wonder about, you know, you're talking about scrubbing the DEI part of it for national grants, but people forget that DEI includes seniors, senior citizens, ADA, people, I wouldn't call them handicap, but the Americans for Disabilities Act, it covers that. It covers a lot of things that people don't think about when it comes to, because it's diversity, inclusion, inclusion is people who are in wheelchairs and mental health and so forth, and senior citizens over, is citizens over 60 or 65 today? Is it 55? Right, whatever. Senior citizens are included in the DEI. That's the inclusion part. So I just wanted to just remind people of that, that if we're being asked to scrub that from it, it also is asking people to not fund for seniors and people with disabilities.
Yeah, I don't know the age. I'm just going to say anything older than me. So I just want to verify, I heard consensus around option number two, and that's what we'll share with the Snohomish County DEM. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. So next, you're up again, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, a few things to mention tonight. First, we do have our meeting next week on the 23rd, but there are five Thursdays in October, so on October 30th, we will not have a meeting. Our next one after that will be November 6th, so there's a little bit of break in between there. Next, we had our street sweeper naming competition, as I'm sure many of you saw on social media, and the winner was Sir Sweeps a Lot. So we'll get that taken care of. And then I did want to update everybody on our continuing conversations and work with waste management. So I know a lot of people have had some issues over the past couple of weeks, and we have been working really hard with waste management to communicate and get notices out there. Patrick, our new Laura, who you met a couple of weeks ago, has coordinated, make sure all the complaints that come to the city come through him. So he's created a spreadsheet and shared that with waste management so they know where all the concerns are, what streets and segments of streets are having the most issues. So we thought that was valuable. We've also posted the easiest way to get in touch with an actual person at waste management. We have flyers for that at the front desk. The most important part, I think, is waste management has now developed a tool. It's on their website. It's live now. So if you go there, you can actually click on your, click on the map where your house is, and the calendar will pop up and tell you exactly what days that your yard debris will, or yard and garbage and recycling would be picked up. So I think that at this point, we're fairly confident that the issues with garbage pickup have been solved, and I'm hopeful that that's the case. But I do want to encourage people to go to the waste management website, click on the link. They've divided the city into four zones at this point. Click on the zone that your house is in, and it should immediately pop up and tell you what days that your pickup is. Well, not lastly, second to last, you might notice Carolyn, who's usually here, is gone this evening, and the reason for that is because she is helping to, inaugurate's not the right word, helping to start cohort number seven for the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy. It's part of the Washington City Management Association that's helping us build a strong bench of future leaders, so anybody that wants this job has the ability to do it, has the background to do it. Lastly, recently, unfortunately, we've had two former mayors of Mount Lake Terrace pass away, and I just wanted to acknowledge them. First is Roger Berg, and the other was Pat Cordova. Mayor Berg served from two separate periods on the city council, from 1976 to 1980, and then again from 90 to 93, and he was elected mayor in June of 90 and re-elected for another two-year term in 1992. So thank him for his contributions to the city. The next, Pat Cordova was a council member for 15 years from 1988 until November of 2003, and she served as mayor from January of 2002 to November of 2003. So I just wanted to acknowledge both of them and appreciate their contributions to Mount Lake Terrace. And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Page.
Thank you for your report. The question I have is about services, city services, and I'm being asked this question from the folks who live over on the old Kmart hill. The street sweeper used to be consistently there in that area, you know, is because of the S curve and the hill and all the foliage there, that regularity of sweeping, you know, isn't occurring and probably hasn't happened in about maybe three weeks or whatever or more. I'm just wondering, is that schedule has been changed or is anything going on that we need to know about?
Yeah, no, it was down, there was a part that broke. It's now fixed. I saw it out this morning doing its thing, so it's back out there. We wanted to make sure it was at full strength before all the leaves started falling.
Councilmember Murray. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, for the updates. Appreciate all of Patrick's work on trying to get things solved with waste management. That's definitely been something that I've heard a lot about in the last several weeks. I think my concern, and maybe I, I don't know, I would love if others tell me differently, but I don't think I've received anything and my neighbors haven't received anything about those changes. So the challenge is, everybody now has defaulted mostly, at least in my neighborhood and my neighbors, to putting out both their recycling and their yard-based bins every week because they don't know what's coming when. I just pulled up the little service map, and there are four districts, as you mentioned, instead of the two that there used to be, which was pretty simple. There was one schedule if you were north of 220th and one if you were south. Now there's four, and they're not very pretty, so they're hard to describe. And two of them alternate weeks between recycling and yard waste collection, and two of them have collection of each of those, but only every other week. I guess what is the plan for waste management to communicate other than waiting for somebody to be mad enough and frustrated enough to call and either receive that information over the phone or to happen upon this, you know, part of the website? Like, what is the plan to convey that to our community so they know and can expect when their services are going to happen?
We had that same question. I should have mentioned that earlier. I'm sorry. The answer to that is there will be a call that goes to each and every customer in Mount Lake Terrace. We don't know the exact date when that's going to go out, hopefully this week, meaning by tomorrow, but it is planned to go out, whether it's an actual in-person call or a robo-call, we're not sure, but it'll highlight all that information to each customer.
Awesome, awesome. I appreciate that very much. Yeah, I think a call is appropriate, and I would just encourage them to use multiple, like, methods. Like, I know they text, because I've gotten a text in the past about, I think, changes due to weather, and they also have email, and lots of us are signed up for auto pay. Like, it would just be nice if they could, particularly because they made changes before they communicated any of those changes, and people are frustrated at this point, it would be really, really nice if they could make sure to kind of, for folks maybe that aren't listening to their voicemail, you know, to make sure that they've got a couple of options to hopefully see that update.
I can guarantee you that Patrick has told them exactly that, probably a little bit differently.
I appreciate his advocacy and tell him I have a neighbor who's been rounding folks up to call waste management until the issue is solved, so hopefully that'll, they're helping them along in terms of pushing them from the community side as well. So, yeah, please send him our thank yous.
I know that I call, when I have problems, I call waste management, and they've always answered. It's not always what I want to hear, but they at least answered the phone. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Who won the competition? Was it a citizen?
Oh, it was a vote on Facebook, we had 45 submittals, I think, and I don't remember the exact count of the winner, but that one, Sir Sweeps A Lot, won by a pretty large margin.
Councilmember Woodard?
Real quick, I just wanted to acknowledge, and maybe said it out loud before, I don't recall, that the flower has been fixed, the rust issue, I know that that was a concern of this council, so just wanted to say that out loud for the residents who don't necessarily read your emails.
Did we fix it internally?
We did, the artist, in the agreement, the artist had to have first opportunity to do any repairs, but he was somewhere back in New England, and he's like, nah, you guys can go ahead and do it. So wanted to make sure that it didn't have any problems during the weather coming up.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Then we'll move on to council liaison reports, and we'll just start over there to the left, and then move our way. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Where'd it go? Here it is. Let's see, on Friday, the 3rd, I had the opportunity to join at the Edmonds Waterfront Center, they did a community breakfast, I think they're doing a wonderful job as partners here with our senior center, so just want to support them, and it was a wonderful breakfast, very big turnout. I was kind of envisioning whether or not Mount Lake Terrace could do something like that, because to be fair, we were looking out over the water, and I don't know, we have a view of Lake Ballinger from our Mickey Corso house, would that be interesting to see if we couldn't pull off a breakfast like that? I know we have in the past, but it was just lovely. Anyway, the next day, that Saturday, the 4th, I had the opportunity to join the Foundation for Edmonds School District, supporting our students with a 5K. I served as one of our callers, and of course, I have a blast with a microphone in my hand, but that's also my way to, one, acknowledge that folks made a sacrifice who live in the area, to have a Saturday morning and a lot of joy coming from a park, and that can still be annoying if you're working late, or heaven forbid, did the overnight shift. So again, thank you to our surrounding community, and know that we want to activate that park, but we will be conscientious about how to do that, which is to say, I did see that we had a question about how many 5Ks, perhaps we should be considering that. That said, folks, this is the beauty of not being isolationist and opening up our doors to the world, people want to use our resources, not just those of us who live here, and that should be received as a wonderful thing. So just kind of putting that out there, that we'll revisit that conversation more formally, but nonetheless, congratulations to the foundation. I believe they raised, we heard this morning, we raised just shy of $80,000, and that might still be raising as more money comes in. Monday, the 6th, real quick, I actually visited Shoreline City Council for a different reason, but gave public testimony and wanted to bring something that they did as an idea here, which is, they use a counter. So I knew I had three minutes, and I watched the counter go down, and I used my full three minutes as best I could, and I thought to myself, as we just watched our clerk have a heart attack because our buzzer went off, that's pretty old-fashioned, for reasons that they go off for no apparent reason. And we have all these cameras, all this capacity, I'm wondering if that might be something we can look at, so I would encourage you all to reach out to them. They also put our names underneath, like, as I'm talking right now, so I'm not Mount Lake Terrace City Council, but it actually has my name and all that, because folks tuning in don't know who's talking, they'll figure it out eventually, but nonetheless, I just thought to myself, that's some really good capacity, and I bet we have a better system here. The next couple of days later, Thursday, I did have my city manager one-on-one, everybody hopefully is doing those, so I don't need to tell you how that went, but I always appreciate the opportunity. On Monday, the 13th, was Indigenous Peoples' Day, was Indigenous Peoples' Day, yeah, that's right, Indigenous Peoples' Day, I was trying to make sure I got that right. And I had participated in the Indigenous Walking Tour, speaking of Edmonds, which they have an Indigenous Walking Tour now, which has an art district, and we think we could be an art district, I know we have an art walk, but it was just really interesting to see that all come together. And so just, again, in the spirit of, we have that stuff here, and we have awesomeness as well, I wonder if we could do something like that. And I know we have a walking tour, I don't know if we thought to formalize it the way they just did, though. The 14th, the next, no, that same, yeah, the next day, the Tuesday, the 14th, was Leadership Day, we gave the proclamation a few days back, and so that was an honor to be there and represent us. And then on the 16th, I don't know why I'm telling you this again, so, some reason I say I did the National Night Out. Oh, sorry, I'm tripping. I was with the foundation again on the 16th, and we were with the Nourishing Network, that's what, I know, I was like, National Night Out, what? Nourishing Network, and sadly, I really fumbled this, because it's a very serious situation, which is, we actually had the honor of going to Scriber, no, it wasn't Scriber Lake, Edmonds Woodway Heights, where the location of the food pantry is for them, and meal kits and all that. Well, we bagged up, as trustees, about 350 bags for meals, but they actually prepare about 1,000. They're expecting 1,000 kids a week will need this help, and that's up from about 400 last year. So in the spirit of, I think that's all, before we get to this shutdown and things that are all happening there, just that that need is steadily rising. So congratulations to them, one, to be able to help meet that need, but just another kind of recognition on our side of, our community is hurting out there, what can we, if anything, do about that? And so, you know, one little litmus test is, well, what's happening to our schools? And again, what they're seeing is more kids are needing these overnight meal kits, as well as the weekend meal kits. And then lastly, I'll just wrap it up with a thank you to the clerk, that was a lot of work to track down what I knew was happened, beauty of memories and quirky memories, is we did find Mayor Tim Mercado's words, and so we'll print that out for everybody very soon here. And then that is a thank you again to the clerk for that, because I'm sure that was a lot of time that you didn't need to use, but I'm sure glad I didn't have to, because I would have never found it, apparently, even though I knew the general phase of where it was happening. Which is, to end this on, just a thank you also to our residents, you know, especially lately, and I want to acknowledge, you know, this council's getting beat up over decisions, and I encourage anybody that thinks they can do decisions like this on a consistent basis to really come and see what that's like. But it is to point out that we often hear the parts they don't like, so it's always wonderful if you ever receive anything that tells you what you do like about us. So I just wanted to acknowledge that a resident took the time to write a very nice card, I'll leave the person's name out, just out of respect, but just to say thank you, that the cards, just like the Christmas cards that arrived, one of our residents, those always land very wonderfully, and just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to send those words, I personally needed to hear those, just in general in life, and so it was just lovely to have them arrive unexpectedly. And I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Solmore?
Thank you, I'm gonna collect my composure after hearing about Pat. I just wanted to read you a little something, I was just looking to see if they had announced her memorial, and I haven't found it yet. She was quoted in the Herald, and they were asking the mayor and council people what gives them the giggles, that's the title, but, so they were asked three questions, and Pat said, "Children are what make the mayor Pat Cordova laugh," she said, "and with her large family, she must be very happy person." Pat and her husband Paul died in 2013, I believe it was, and they had a very large family. Pat and Paul had 10 children, and they all went to Mount Lake Terrace High School, and then she had 18 grandchildren at the time, and her oldest grandchild was in the Navy, and then she had a freshman grandchild at Notre Dame, so Pat used to always talk about Notre Dame, Notre Dame this, Notre Dame that, and I can't, look at the pictures, they're very upsetting, but I just wanted to let you know a little bit about Pat, and the mayor and I have kind of talked about different things that we could do for her, to honor her, but, so I've lost my two mentors this year, and it's extremely hard. I still have the notes from Pat, who taught me how to campaign and run and how to order my signs, it's all scratched out, and she's the one who asked me to run for council, and I know a lot of her children, and it's a big loss, and I'm hoping that maybe we can maybe put something in the newsletter, and not to forget about Bob Berg, he still has a child living in our city as well, but, yeah, you form a lot with the people that you serve with, and Pat was a real trooper, and I just will remember her laugh, and I think you all would have really enjoyed Pat, she was amazing person. So I'm gonna transition, and it's hard to transition off of that, but I'll transition to RPAC, because Pat used to, well, Pat's home is above Candy King Park, and so when I think of the park, I always think of the Cordovas. And I was unable to go to RPAC, but I do know that they did talk, I did review the information, they reviewed the recreational fee schedule, the increase, and that will be coming to us, Arbor Day action information, the 2025 work plan, and the tree board. And then I just wanted to mention, today it was announced Ken Morgott forced safety cameras in their area, and they're going to be moving around, it's not with flock, but I believe it's for tickets, and they collect your license plate number, and the first time I think you get caught, you don't get a ticket, but after that, you do get a ticket, and I know Seattle has just enforced another letter law that they're gonna be sending out, which is real interesting, that came out, but I won't get into that. And then recently, I was at a gathering with some employees from some other cities, and what they told me about was kind of interesting, there's a counter out that you can get an app, and it actually tracks how many people go to your events, and I had no idea about that, but it's, I guess a lot of cities have that, and I was wondering, do we have that?
That program is called Placer AI, and no, we don't, because it's very expensive. Well, maybe we have, maybe we have, maybe we have different definitions of what expensive is, I tend to think it's pretty expensive.
So what it does is, everybody's supposed to have an app open on their phone at some time, and I was like, what? And they said, it doesn't track the cell phone number, it just tracks how many cell phones have open apps.
This news to me. Is that, okay. Well, if everybody doesn't have a cell phone... Yeah. So anyways, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And I went to our work session on the 9th, on the 11th, I had the opportunity to go to the International Rescue Committee's annual fundraiser. Ghul Siddhi, I think is her last name, is somebody that we've worked with here in our community, she's their development manager and extended the invite, and I thought, just particularly with us doing Welcoming Week these last two years, it was interesting. So what the International Rescue Committee does, they call themselves IRC, but they provide opportunities for refugees, asylum seekers, you know, folks that have been victims of human trafficking, survivors of torture, immigrants, et cetera, and help them get resettled when they come into our area, and so they, you know, help them settle into their homes, they help them, you know, with English language classes, securing employment, getting kids into school, all of those sorts of really critical things, that if you are coming from another country, particularly when you haven't necessarily planned to make a transition like that, are helpful and necessary, and I will say, it was a sobering event, you know, I think, building on the conversation earlier about funding cuts, they have lost somewhere in the neighborhood of 50% of their funding that had historically come from the federal government that's been cut, and so they are navigating those service cuts while still trying to best support the people that they do. So, you know, and at a time, gosh, the number was sobering, and I wish I'd written it down, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 122 million people around the globe are now actively displaced from their homes, which is the highest amount that we've ever experienced, and I just, I just had to sit with that. I mean, when they shared that, that was, you know, it is not something, you know, I think, at least I don't think about every day, and so I just, I'm grateful for the work that we've done in our Welcoming Week, to ensure that, you know, as much as we can as a city, we are supporting those folks within our community. And I just, a big thank you to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, who has continued to build really meaningful relationships within our community, and I think we continue to see the ways that that, I think, expands, you know, our reach here in Mount Lake Terrace. So, sorry, I clicked off what I was on. And then, so, oh, that's, sorry, that's what was on my list, so the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission meeting was typically scheduled for last night, has been moved this month, I was looking for that date. So it is now going to be on Monday, the 27th, at 6:30 PM here at City Hall, if folks are interested in joining, and I'll have an update for us after that. But they are continuing to work on the strategic plan, is the major body of work that they've been working through. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about was Week Without Driving. I'm hopeful that folks, you know, had the opportunity to at least think about what it would be like to not drive, if you didn't decide to join me during that week. But my family participated, you know, as my kids, you know, will complain to you about, if you ever want to ask them how that went from their perspective. I actually recorded my daughter, because I thought it was just hilarious, my son didn't give me enough good input, he was just like, ugh, I'm glad it's over. But that's because it's challenging, right? We have lives and communities that are often not designed around people who can't drive, even though a third of folks in our community can't drive, right? So, you know, some high-level takeaways, and I'm also happy to talk to folks if you ever want to know more, but I think better stuff, like, so I've been doing it five years now, so I think there's some things that have gotten much better. I think our waste bin efforts have made a huge difference, like, very rarely on garbage day did I see folks putting their garbage cans in the middle of the sidewalk, that was not true five years ago. So kudos to all the folks up here who have helped spread that word, to the city staff who have done work there, I think that's made a really effective difference, so nice job, community, in not creating barriers from that perspective. Light Rail, huge difference maker in terms of both, we took it north to the Linwood Transit Center, because there's lots of buses that come out of there, as well as utilized it to go south, both to downtown, and I had a flight that I had to take, so it's obviously much easier to get to the airport now from Mount Lake Terrace than it was five years ago. Frequency is much better, so a lot of the major routes in Mount Lake Terrace used to run, that used to run every 30 minutes, now run every 20 minutes, that makes a huge difference when you're trying to plan connecting bus routes, that often take two or three different routes to get where you're going. Older kids makes it easier, my daughter was really nice, it's really easy to take the public bus from the high school to our house, and she utilized that a lot this week when she was, or that week when she was staying late after school. And I will say, the new businesses in Mount Lake Terrace make a huge difference in terms of walkability, to be able to access goods and services, particularly grocery services, so kudos to Grocery Outlet, and kudos to all of the new businesses here locally. My daughter was making brownies one night, and she made three trips, because the planning skills, we're still working on those, right? But you know what? It's close enough that, you know, she could make those three trips and got those brownies made for an event at school the next day. So I think those are all really good things that are happening in our community, that maybe look a little bit differently than they did five years ago. You know, I think opportunities, you know, I think one, from an individual opportunity perspective, and maybe this is someplace that we can help do some education as well, there's still a lot of overgrowth over our sidewalks in terms of people's yards, whether that's bushes, trees, that sort of thing, that makes it really hard to bypass some areas. If you're mobile and walking, it's usually okay, but if you have maybe more mobility challenges, or you're, maybe you've got a wheelchair or a stroller, definitely more challenging. Early and late service is still really challenging, and particularly early and late service to Light Rail, I ended up having to walk home from the Light Rail station twice, and I'm really fortunate that that is not a horrible walk for me, but that is not true for everybody, right? And so those, that first and last mile, I think, is still really challenging when you get, you know, kind of those early morning hours or late evening hours. Protected bike lanes, I will say, it's interesting, I know we talked about bike lanes recently, and I am not somebody who bikes often, but I got an e-bike here in recent years, because it's kind of a game changer, right? It is very uncomfortable. It is very uncomfortable, I think, for folks who are not regular bike riders to ride around on our streets, right? So, I think if we're thinking about mobility, and particularly if we're thinking about safety, as I see more and more folks, particularly young folks, but also commuters in the morning, using, I think, e-bikes and e-scooters to get around the community. I think thinking about how we provide more protection and security for folks is an important thing that we should have a conversation about in the future. And then I think, just thinking about those without technology access. And while we are not in charge of the technology associated with transit, I was chatting with a gentleman who had missed his bus, and he just had a flip phone, and he was telling me about, you know, his life and things. But it's really challenging when, you know, something comes up and you don't have technology, again, that we so often rely on. And I think it's just a good reminder for us as council and as city staff to be thinking about, like, what are the things we take for granted when we're making decisions about how we plan, how we advertise, et cetera, that, you know, is not true for everybody? And I think it was a good reminder for me that technology is a piece of that. Couple of tips, I guess, that I would love to just share. So, Community Transit has a Transit Navigator service. I didn't know about that, and I thought that that was super cool. So, if you are somebody that has not taken transit before, or maybe you haven't taken it a long time, or you just would like more comfort and familiarity, Community Transit literally has somebody that will help you with that. They will, like, guide you through that process. And so, I just, I think that is a phenomenal thing, particularly for folks who are maybe less technology, you know, adept, or just uncomfortable with kind of navigating and don't have somebody to show them. I think that's a great service, and you could learn about it on their website. But if that's not the way you navigate it, you can reach out to me, and I'd be happy to help get you that information. Kids 18 and under ride free. I know I've talked about that before, but a reminder, and I think an important one, that if you're taking them on a rail, which I did with my kids during that week because we went over to the Seattle Center, like, they need their, they need their cards. So, they will make you pay, even if you are a child. If you don't have a card, and you can get a card at the Linwood Transit Center, they'll make one for you with your name, which is pretty cool. I did also learn, though, because we couldn't find my son's card, of course, was that there are free transit passes available with lots of the events down there. So, I think also good to remember, there's lots of resources sometimes that you don't even know about. I think that's probably where I'll leave things. I will just say, it is, and I, it is a time-consuming week. I always am very tired at the end of that week. But I always learn things, and I always feel more connected to both the physical infrastructure in our community as well as the people. I think one of my favorite experiences that week, I was sitting with my son. We were coming home from his football practice, which was in Everett, which is not my favorite thing, although I got to take Everett Transit for the first time in the five years. So, that was a cool experience. But we were sitting at the Linwood Transit Center waiting for the bus, and there was lots of seats, but I had my bag next to me, and this woman's walking by, and she's like, hello. And I'm like, hi. And I was like, and she kind of stood there, I was like, do you want to sit? And she's like, I would. And so, I moved my bag, and she took a seat, and we started chatting. And she's, you know, turns out she lives at Taliswood, and, you know, she was taking the bus home. And she was like, I am just somebody who always likes to say hi to my neighbors. She's like, they don't always say hello in return, but, she's like, I always try. And she just had such great energy, and I just, you know, we have such great folks in our community. And I just, I think, sometimes when we get in our cars and we drive to where we need to go, and then we drive home, I feel like we're not as connected as we could be because you don't have those opportunities for just, you know, connection as you're going about your day. So, anyway, she brightened up my whole day, and she was lovely, and I appreciate. She said hi, and I think if you have neighbors that say hi to you, I would encourage you to say hi in return because they're pretty awesome. So, all right, that's all I got. Thanks for humoring me.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 14th, Tuesday, attended the Left One Retirement Board. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Page?
Mine's pretty short, on the 8th. Had my city manager's meeting. But I do want to update you on some stuff that's going on with the Ray 8 Salmon Recovery Council. Some things that are coming up. First of all, last month, they did get their, they approved, they approved their 2026 budget and work plan. So, they have their Ray 8 budget, they have their partner car share table, as well as their staff teamwork plan. All of this information that I'm going to be talking about right now is also on their Ray 8 website, you know, Salmon Recovery Council. The upcoming event, while I'm with the Salmon Recovery Group is, December 10th in Seattle, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, the 25 Years of Action from the Snohomie Watershed Forum, celebrating 25 years of action on what the group has been doing. Also, and if you want to attend any of this stuff that I'm mentioning, again, if you go to the website, you'll be able to RSVP for that. On the 29th, they're planning a site visit from 10:00 to 11:30 at the Barashiva Park Shoreline in water restoration. Again, that's about an hour and a half where they're just going to have opportunity for folks to go and kind of see what's been going on, you know, over at the watershed there. And the big event, I guess they're all big events. But the Washington Salmon Coalition Council of Regions and the Regional Fisheries Enhancement groups will have their 2026 Salmon Day in Olympia, February 4th. You know, which is a big event for them. A lot of the members of the council go. And they're hoping, again, that someone from our group, maybe Mia, imagine Pat, will probably go, Hutchins. But again, that's an opportunity to RSVP on their website so that you get an opportunity to attend. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. So, for my report, on the 3rd of October, I was at the Mayor's, AWC Mayor's Exchange in Wenatchee. And it was a smaller group of mayors, but we really, really talked a lot, exchanged ideas and so forth. And it really is something that's worth going to. On the 8th of October, I attended the South County Mayor's Lunch over in Linwood. And again, the sharing that is done with, between the mayors is just amazing. We all, we all have similar, similar challenges in our cities, and then we have challenges that the city, different cities have. And so, we just really talk about those things. On the 10th, I attended the Cocoon House Gala. And I mentioned that because all the elected officials were, were able to stand up and be recognized. And it is, and it's a group that I would like to have them come and speak to us because it is for homeless teenagers, a safe place to stay. And on the 11th, I attended the State Representative Cindy Dill's talk at the Shoreline Library with the former mayor, Keith Scully. And there were two other Mount Lake Terrace residents in attendance. So, that was kind of neat. And that is the end of my report. But I also wanted to mention that, and we, I'm just going to mention it now, because the Dragon Boat Festival has been taking place in Edmonds, at the Edmonds waterfront for the past several years. And now they're looking at coming to Lake Ballinger, which would be great because the, every time the ferry went out, apparently, the water kind of moves, and so they couldn't have any races. But that, Lake Ballinger is just flat, unless there's winds, of course. And so, it's a better place to have a race. They could actually have a race there. I thought that was kind of neat. And that's the end of my report. And then we'll go on to new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just want to draw the attention. I'm sure the city manager got the email about Mount Lake Terrace High School traffic in the morning. Mia wrote to us, she's a senior at Mount Lake Terrace High School, how in the morning at 7:00 AM, if you're going north, that backs up. And they'd like to have, in the morning, a right turn only. But I'm sure we could have someone from our, yeah, traffic, investigate what we could do there to make it a little easier entering the high school northbound.
Yeah, I shared that email with John Merrick, our traffic engineer, who's come and talked to you guys several times, and will put something together to respond.
Great, thank you.
Because he just came to us and talked about the traffic, how for years, we're going to two-lane that and have a turn lane. So, that would even make it worse right in front of the high school. I mean, it's a great idea, but, yeah, you get stuck in that traffic waiting to go to work, and you're in the right-hand lane, and everybody's trying to turn, but they have to wait for everybody to walk across. It really gets back up. I understand what she's saying there.
Well, I know that traffic there has always been challenging with, with a lot of the students driving to school instead of walking to school or taking the bus. Because my son was one of them. And, Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, I actually want to thank Councilmember Ryan. Thank you for the teacher to remember the student because that was in my notes and I got sidebarred, which I just actually wanted to pause and just acknowledge and say thank you to that student for trusting the process and the system. As one who's on the college side of that, I see so many of this generation just giving up on systems like this. And instead, you leaned into it, and we already have the traffic engineer looking into your very serious concern. Because you can't be the only one who's had that thought, but you are the first one to act upon that. So, again, just wanted to acknowledge that. And that is in my notes, but it took a teacher to remind me. Never forget those students, so thank you, Councilmember Ryan, for pointing that out.
And I just want to add, I know when I read the letter, you know, as you know, I'm in the school district in Shoreline. And Edmond Woodways, when you come out of Edmond Woodway, when they drop off kids by the tennis court, that's a right turn only. And I know at the Shurecrest High School, again, during those hours when the kids are either, when the parents are dropping off kids, or when, at the end of school, those are the timeframes when that right turn only is only in effect in Shoreline, and it works, you know. But, you know, you got to enforce it, and, but it does, it does work, you know, during those time periods when, you know, people are coming in and out of school. So, I hope we get that figured out and get the traffic moving like it should.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that we're having such a good conversation about this. I would echo everybody's, what everyone said already. I would just add, I think that there's opportunity to perhaps work with the school because I literally sat in that line this morning, and it makes a difference. 6:55, we're good, 7 o'clock, and we're going to be sitting there for 20 minutes. But I, so the school has two entry lanes that they're not really using the second of. So, I also think there's probably opportunity to partner with the school, perhaps to figure out how to get more of those cars off the street and into the school parking lot to resolve. It doesn't necessarily help them get to class sooner, but I think it does resolve the issue of the traffic backing up on the 44th. So, that would be, I think, worth investigating and having some conversation with the school as well as in how they're managing the traffic once it's off that main road.
I'm sure a traffic engineer who's an expert in that will take all of that into consideration.
Fair enough.
Anyone else? All right. If there isn't anything else, I'm going to just adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned.